Good evening and welcome to the April 26, 2022, meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. This is a work session and we are, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a report from the Convention and Visitors Bureau of the Chamber of Commerce for the 2022 First Quarter Report and Karen Hibbert and Kevin Roberts are both here to fill us in. So if you'd join us, yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Roberts, as you said, and I have the pleasure of serving as chairman of the 2022 CVB Steering Committee. Karen told me I had to come and introduce her and I said, well, they all know you and half of them at least don't know me. So I represent Kansas State University on the committee. I'm a professor and department head or interim department head of hospitality management. And before I turn it over to Karen for her updates, the updates I know she's very anxious to share with you all. I would note that among the updates she has for you this evening, there are three items that to me stand out among all of these. And first was the return of the four A or four-day two A state basketball tournament this year. This was the first full tournament we've had since COVID cut the 2020 tournament short. I don't want to take any of Karen's thunder, but the number of visitors who attended the event looked really good this year and the number of visitors that spent night in our hotels and ate in our great restaurants. And Karen will share with you the details. Second, we had seen an increase in youth tournaments this year and those organizers are choosing Manhattan because of our newest recreational facilities in Anthony and Eisenhower Middle Schools and certainly a testament to all of you. But among those was my daughter's traveling volleyball team and as a father, thank you for your support of these facilities because it allowed us to keep our money here in Manhattan rather than going to other communities. And last but certainly not least, while we've not hit pre-COVID levels yet, we continue to see improvements in our year-to-year hotel occupancy percentages and daily or average daily rates. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the lady in the room who needs no introduction, Karen Hibbert, Director of the CVB.
Oh, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Now, you can see why Kevin is a joy to have on our steering committee meeting. I really appreciate his leadership as well as the leadership of the other folks that serve on the steering committee. And further on, I'm going to introduce who those members are. Our last presentation that we gave was prior to 2021 coming to a conclusion. I've placed at your desk there the Chamber Annual Report. You will find on page 20, the accomplishments of the CVB during 2021. To highlight those things, I just want to bring to mind what we felt were highlights as we were trying to return to the new normal. Certainly, the spirit of the holidays was the highlight for us. Our new website partnering with the Kanza United Way on the inaugural restaurant week, the opening of the courtyard by Marriott and the return of meetings and events, as well as our 2022 Visitors Guide were those highlights that we wanted to celebrate. But most importantly, we want to bring on 2022. With that, to guide us through 2022, you officially met Dr. Kevin Roberts, as well as I have listed here the members of our steering committee. Our newest members to the committee this year are Colin Noble, who represents the hotels, Randy Stitt, who is our financial representative and he is with Community First Bank, and Scott Seben, representing the restaurant industry with Kites, Mr. K's and Rockin' K's. Each of our steering committee members serve a three-year term with them rotating off, except for those that choose to serve as our chairman and they get to serve a bonus year. So we thank each one of them for serving. As you know, social media is king. We wanted to share with you several of our videos that have been running in case you haven't caught those on online. This is a video that ran on our January social media and our visual, our video visuals linked to our new year, new experiences landing page, showcasing several fun activities to try in the new year. Take a look. In February, we celebrate Valentine's Month. Of course, our February social ads featured a quick video linking viewers to our getaway for two landing page. This page outlined how to plan a perfect vacation for you and your significant other right here in Manhattan. And finally, this is our leading ad that we ran on Facebook and Instagram. It links to a form for our viewers to fill out their email address in which then they get a bonus of our monthly email distributions. We have generated over 500 leads during the first quarter from this video. As a result of our organic marketing efforts, which combines our Facebook, Twitter and Instagram, Pinterest and YouTube, we have had the total of 253,823 impressions, 685 clicks and 18,846 followers. And we've also ran paid ads on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Pinterest and Google. And as a result, we've already had a big increase from the fourth quarter of 2021. Those ads that I just showed you reflecting the January and February ads had a, ran with a website traffic objective. Both ads had over 4,000 clicks during the month. As we continue to grow our distribution list through those lead generation ads such as travel guides free and visit and meet Missouri, our in-house bi-weekly publication, Just the Happenings, goes out to over 4,000 people. Our Manhattanims hit 8,000 subscribers and our Meet Manhattan has 2,000 interested subscribers. All are great creative ways in which to entice the reader to choose Manhattan for leisure, for meetings and special events. This chart reflects how well our meetings and events are doing through the first quarter for the past five years. As you can see, with 2022 leading the top, we are improving greatly from 2021 and the grips of COVID. Certainly, the size of meetings are ebbing and flowing in size, but we do look forward to 2022 becoming more of a business-as-usual year. That 2021 year, I just shudder when I look at that, the first, the first quarter with 11 meetings in a three-month timeframe with the few requested room nights, the number of attendees and the estimated impact. So again, I think you can agree with me, numbers talk and you can see that when we were in the grips and people weren't moving, it really hurt our community. We've been talking and talking about the Old Manhattan Roadshow. We've been sharing with you for the last quarter presentation, our anticipation and our creativity of taking Manhattan on the road. With over 400 meeting planners receiving emails and our inviting invitation, we began promoting the roadshow in December. We encouraged early registration and engaged our partners by email marketing to highlight the planners, to highlight to some of the planners, some of the partners, they would meet as they met with Manhattan on the road. So not to be disappointed, yet again, we have another video for you to enjoy. This landed in your inbox.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the new hotel in Manhattan, Kansas. We're located right in Aggieville. They have 127 rooms and meeting space. I can't wait to see you guys all at the Manhattan Roadshow.
Hi, I'm Bruce Ferguson, executive director of Midwest Dream Car Collection, car museum in Manhattan, Kansas. Keep us informed when you're planning for events. We can take your bids to four people up to 300. It includes our main, our collection, event space, or if you're in line, walk in. Just give us a call and we'll decide.
Life's an adventure. Live it.
Can't wait to meet you on the road. We are Wildwood Adventure Park. When you think about more adventures, think MHK.
Zibba.
Now, wouldn't that invitation make you want to find out more about Manhattan, Kansas? We're very grateful for our talented communications team to help put that together and to help us market. As we did the roadshow, we had great representation from our partners as we met at the KSU Olathe Campus. We've also put together what they experienced when they came. First of all, they were greeted by a great car from the Midwest Dream Car Collection. You can see it in here. And then they stepped into the facility itself to see all that Manhattan has to offer. And here we go. There's the car and Willie and our team. It was a great day for us to be able to promote Manhattan as a meeting destination. Visit Manhattan is pleased to be back in person to tell our stories to the travelers. We put Marcia Rozell, our sports and leisure sales manager, on the road to attend the Omaha Sports Show in February to tell the story of Manhattan's many offerings. As you can see, folks are eager to gather information and to plan great getaways once again. Manhattan's outdoor offerings were the attraction during COVID and remain inviting to the visitor to experience. We greatly appreciate Marcia and her tireless energy of promoting Manhattan, no matter where we send her. As Kevin has already mentioned, we are also so very pleased to do our part in promoting Manhattan's newest recreation facilities. We feel like we were sort of like kids waiting to open presents on Christmas morning. We were thrilled to share with you that the sporting events are indeed happening. On February 12th, we hosted the Mid-America Youth Basketball with 32 teams attending yielding an estimated economic impact of $43,532. The following weekend, on February 19th, we hosted the Heart of American Volleyball with 64 teams competing, generating an estimated economic impact of over $72,000. And the inaugural Little Apple Cornhole Tournament postponed from January to March brought 21 teams to our court sporting, sporting an estimated economic impact of over $10,000. We love seeing these cars in the parking lot. Sometimes parking could be an issue. Kevin, I don't know what it was like when you were here for volleyball, but hopefully you had to circle a couple of times to find parking. And what a treat to tip off a normal four-day state basketball tournament. Two A is totally dependent on where those teams come from. But to remind you, in 2018, that was our last year of normalcy. We welcomed in 8,356 attendees, paid attendees in 2018. We skipped a year in 2019 due to a conflict in schedules with the Big 12 not being completed as well as when high school tournament play, the tournament went to haze. We did our part in getting the tournament to come back and in 2020, we were well-posed for us to again have a four-day tournament. If you remember, two days in, the world came to an end. We welcomed 3,773 attendees to that tournament and then the tournament was cut short. In 2021, we had a three-day tournament with only half of the teams playing with limitations, with people being socially distanced as well as a limit in the number of fans. So that yielded 4,011 paid attendees. But this year, by golly, it was a banner year with 9,846 attendees coming in to cheer on their, their favorite teams. Look at this crowd. We had great crowds and again, much of that depends on where the teams are from. Right down the road, we had St. Mary's, which brings in a lot of fans, doesn't yield hotel rooms, but it does fill the stands as you can see that the Coliseum is filled, a great venue in which to have that. We also boasted back-to-back state champions. We welcomed and congratulated the Sterling Girls, taking home their championship again. And the Hillsboro, Hillsborough Boys also took home the hardware two years in a row. So again, it's such a pleasure for us to be able to welcome those young athletes, introduce them to Kansas State, introduce them to the community of Manhattan and help them envision what could be when they then make that next step of making further education plans. Our Smith Travel Research Report is fascinating to follow and for us to have a clear picture of how our hotel lodging is performing. This is month to month through March, so this shows you through March what we are doing. As you can see, we're beginning to improve just a little bit. With March 22, having a 53% occupancy and average daily rate of $104.72, revenue per room $55.74, supply of our rooms 40,114, the demand for rooms 21,353 and the revenues generated for that just a bit over $2 million. That's all generated from our offerings of 1,294 sleeping rooms. Now, year-to-date for March, you can see that we still have a ways to go from where we were in 18. Through March, year-to-date, we are setting with our hotel occupancy at 44.5%. Average daily rate of $99.32, rev par $44.23, the supply of 116,460 rooms, demand 51,869, generating that revenue of a little over $5 million. Due to the timing of our presentation, we're able to peek, take a peek into what our second quarter is looking like. You can see that week to week, we continue to improve greatly from where we were in 20. Look at those numbers in 20. Those were devastating to us. But even with the slight dip that you're seeing from 21 to 20, that is just due to the ebb and flow of conferences that are in town and the size of conferences. And yes, as you travel along the interstate, you're going to see that Manhattan is bright and shiny once again. We have new billboards that are scattered along the way, encouraging and ensuring our visitors that there is plenty to enjoy in Manhattan. From ziplining, attractions, fun food, plenty of purple with great hikes in skyline. Oh, Manhattan, it's a great place to visit. And coming soon, Manhattan Regional Airport will also have new billboards that will be welcoming our travelers as they come by air. So stay tuned through our second quarter. We'll show that, show you that as well. So with that, it is a privilege to promote Manhattan and to share with you our first quarter findings. Who might have the first question or comment for me?
Hi, Karen. Thank you for the report. It's always good to see our numbers more positive and also utilizing both of the rec centers. I think that's what we always envisioned and it's, it's good to see that happening. I did have a question for your first quarter meetings events. So I think that's like the first chart you showed or something.
Yes.
One of the first charts. You had, for 2022 was 32 meetings. And the highest one was on 2019 for 53 meetings. And the rooms requested were 4,415, whereas in 19 it was 4,024. So I know it could have just been maybe one individual and getting into a room, although there were more room requests. But on the economic impact, I know there's 3,000, you know, well, 3,200 attendees, 22 and 12,000 in 19. But it only seems to be like, I mean, not only, but a million-dollar difference between the 12,000 and the 1,000 attendees. I would think that would be like three times as much or something.
I don't have the list in front of me, so I can tell you just from, from past history. Some of these meetings are day meetings, so they might not be spending, they wouldn't be spending the night. Some of them are different since.
Like a luncheon meeting or something like, or maybe not even a luncheon and afternoon meeting and then they go.
Yes, so it just varies. And again, we're just trying to give you a snapshot
Right.
of those meetings that we work directly with. I'm happy to run that report for you.
No, 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 that's, that's all right. I was just wondering, but that's, that's a good explanation for me why, especially if some of the in-town ones are just having or surrounding you, you're not just having it a stay or a night stay or anything like that. But I think it's a great report. I like seeing the more on the social media, the 30-second videos. People love watching videos. When we travel, we try to click on those, keep us, see what we want to, keep it interesting, I guess. And we have a lot going on, so.
Yeah, we do. And I really appreciate your comments. It's, our team does a great job of taking the investment that we have made in our photography and the ability to tell the story. Sometimes we go, we've seen, we've seen that picture multiple times before, but the creative way that they put that together, it is enticing. I think it is inviting to that visitor that might be looking at Manhattan for the very first time. So I, we really appreciate our team effort of those folks that have that talent to be able to tell that story. And again, we know social media is where people are, are going to to gather information.
Like last Saturday, I couldn't attend anything. I was not really, I was just moving around a lot. But there were so many things going on on, on Saturday and it was good to see everybody back vibrant. But I wonder how many out-of-towners, I know our races typically have, you know, a whole lot of people that come from out of town and probably drive back. So I don't know if they spend money here, but I do know those types of events are a pretty big deal. So I like seeing that and I, I don't know how effective parades are for revenue. So if there's a Little Apple Pride Parade or St. Patrick's Day Parade or anything like that, I don't know what kind of an economic impact they have. I know some businesses sometimes think about not having it because it's almost too much of a headache because nobody goes to those restaurants. They just kind of participate and then they go home. So I don't know what you're hearing about such things or.
Well, again, sales receipts measure that and, and you can't separate, we need to separate that, but when we see that continuing to go up. Again, our organizers, and I'll give hats off to, we'll use Manhattan Running Company and Ben Siegel as an example. For his races, he does a great job when folks register to know, to ask where they're coming from, captures zip codes so that we know if they're from out of town, as well as he asks, do they spend the night? And not necessarily which hotel, but are they spending the night? So that's very helpful for us to know. Again, the more activity and I will give a shout out as we have invested in our website, something that we heard from you all as well as what was a goal from, for us as we did our new website. We wanted to make that calendar accessible, but also easy. We're limited in our numbers, but we wanted, if you have an event that you know has that opportunity to attract outsiders, you can put that on, you can submit your event on our calendar so that we can place that, help tell the story. So for our community to listen, it's, it's simple for them to do that.
And maybe that's what needs to be more pushed out, like, hey, if you have an event, let us know. We can put it on there. I know the Mercury's done a great job. I think, I looked at like the Thursday or Friday paper. It was like, the back page was full of events. And some may just be small, not as for, much for visitors and such. There was a whole lot. So I think between the Mercury and CVB, those calendars are getting packed. And I think, I think that's really, really good news for the city of Manhattan. And I thank you once again for your report and thank you, Kevin, for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Karen, I know I'm really pleased with, I know after the stampede left, we, we all talked about, what are we going to get to replace that? And maybe sometime you could bring us a report about those new things that, you know, because I know you're always thinking. I'm especially impressed with some of the novel things that, that you're working with. And one is this air guitar, May 6th at the Wareham, free. I just think that will, I, I think if you want to laugh, that's the place to go. I hope it holds everybody that wants to come. But I'm just eager to have some novel things that will attract people to. And I know we, we have to have the repetition and this, this tournaments and those kinds of things. But sometimes we'll be, we can be well-known for the eclectic things too, so.
Well, and certainly next, next Sunday begins National Tourism Week. And so we do have some fun things planned.
I know you do, yeah.
National Tourism Week. And the air guitar is, is certainly that thing that's going to end, well, won't end the week. It's just a buildup, the first event that's happening for the weekend because then the Flint Hills Festival is on Saturday and Mother's Day is on Sunday. So even though that doesn't really fall into National Tourism Week, but you should travel to see your mom.
Group it all.
So there's a lot of fun things and we'll be back for you to share the national, the proclamation for National Tourism Week. But certainly that air guitar, with that being a, a regional competition, the organizers of that have great visions for Manhattan and for that becoming even bigger. So again, we talk about what makes tourism unique. We could take a vote here of all of the things that when you go on vacation, your choice would be different than your choice and yet it's all tourism and it all helps dollars go around. So that's what, that's what we want to do. We want to be attractive so that folks can come.
I think you're doing something for Bridget Everett. I'm going to do a proclamation, I know, but what are you planning?
There will be a meet and greet.
Okay.
Bridget, 4:30 to 6 o'clock at City Park. So stay tuned. We'll be putting out more information about that. But that, that will be a special day for us to welcome home, welcome home someone who's doing their part to help tell the story of Manhattan, the Little Apple.
And focusing on Kansas and Manhattan. That's great. Yeah, good news. Thank you very much. I think we're pleased and so is, do other commissioners have comments?
Yep. Also, thank you both for coming and doing the report. A lot of good things there. Think I want to get you to do a little prognosticating here. You've been in the, you've been doing this for a long time and in the industry a long time. We have Dr. Kevin there with hospitality. So you're talking to people, seeing what's booking, what's coming out. How does it look for this year going out? What do you, what are people telling you? What type of things do you have maybes on the books?
Yeah, that's very, that's very interesting. And certainly our staff is so small and so Marcia Rozell is working very closely with conferences. And what we are seeing is exactly what we thought we would see. We still are seeing meetings happening, but their planning is not quite as long and they're shorter in time. So a three-day meeting might be a day and a half or two days. So again, there's still a little bit of not anxiousness, just cautiousness, I think, as, as folks are coming out of COVID. I talked to a planner today about associations. Associations have also been hit hard. There is an eagerness, with that being said, there's an eagerness to meet in person. I believe that we are all zoomed out. Zooms are convenient. There are times when it is appropriate for you to have a Zoom meeting. But to truly have an educational experience, to be able to have that opportunity to be face-to-face, to learn from one another, I think we will see that coming back even stronger. So as we look forward and, and you know, we work to the future a lot, you know, I can't, there are times that I think, good grief, where did, where did 2014 go? When that is yesterday, when we, we're now looking at 2024, 25, what's going to happen? When we look at our community, our community is going to look much different in just a few short years as far as how we attract what we have to offer and what makes Manhattan unique. So I think this year, if I had any words to say is be patient and for us to just, to be, to be understanding that we're doing our part. The reason we did that roadshow and are looking for more creative ways is to continue to tell that story. That Manhattan is a destination for you to meet in because we do have venues that need and want you to meet in and that you could have a great experience.
So, and you say that we're, we're pretty typical of what you're hearing from your peers. And you say that we're, we're pretty typical of what you're hearing from your peers and other communities is all about the same? And you may not have an answer to this one, I'm just curious for our hospitality industry that we have here. We keep hearing about the staffing issues and, and things like that. Are hotels in similar situations like to some of our restaurants that only do drive-through because they don't have enough people to?
Yes, yes, and we just had a steering committee two weeks ago, and we go around and ask our members to share with us what some of their challenges are, and that is the number-one issue of those that represent that hospitality industry, whether it is lodging or restaurant and dining. There's simply not enough staff. Then you add to that that summer's about to happen. And guess what? We want people to come in the summer, they come in the summer, but there's not enough staff for that. So that's a, that's a, across the board, that's an issue that we still are fighting. So if you know of anybody that wants a job, I think you can fit them to work very quickly.
Okay, again, thank you.
Karen, I can't remember what we talked about. As far as perhaps taking the roadshow down to Wichita, was that going to be this fall or not till probably next spring? What, what did you guys decide?
We had talked about being this fall, and as you know, you were at the committee meeting, there's some mixed thoughts as to, do we do it in August? Do we do it in fall? Should we wait? I can tell you all of our partners that were there felt that that was a great day for them to be able to interact with one another and to make some business deals, such as if you're in one venue and you come from one venue to another, and so it was very profitable in that way. So stay tuned, we're not done with that yet. And as we go to Wichita, that would be more Kansas, Kansas business, business. Again, as we continue to come alive, if you wish, how do you find that right date in which to have the best attendance possible?
Okay, thanks.
An answered question.
You know, I was just curious, you know, is there going to be a, a list of various sporting events you're going to bring in here? Like, you know, we, we highlighted, you know, volleyball and you had basketball.
Certainly, we can do that for our second quarter, and I know that M A Y B is, is looking for June here. And, and they're kind of dancing with us. They like that facility, they see that. I did not bring that, but certainly we can, we can bring that. If you'd like, I can send that to you.
No, that, that's fine. I just, you know, I think that, that's something that's got some good, good possibilities, you know, for the city. Like, you see the volleyball, I hadn't thought about that cornhole competition. That's a new one. Still waiting for the pickleball tournament?
Yes, yes, and, and again, Marcia has, is, conferences and sports are very similar in the fact that you have a planner. It already is planned where they're going to be next month, but what about that next year? What about, you know, next fall? And so working with them, getting them on our books is, is that challenge. It's, it's how do you market that to be able to tell the story?
Okay, good. I hope to, to see that increase, because I think, you know, I've been looking at the sales tax receipts, and of course, you've always got estimates of the impact, but it looks like our sales taxes are creeping up, and that's good news for the city. And, and you know, the more people we can bring in here to, you know, spend the night and use, use the hotels, whatever, you know, every bit of that, you know, you know, helps, and I can see that creeping up, and that's where our success will be, I'm convinced.
We need you to be out and about this weekend, because there'll be seven hundred and fifty gymnasts that will be in our facilities competing. So just be ready for those gymnasts to make a difference. And a lot of gymnasts are young ladies, and young ladies like to spend money.
Karen, why don't you stay there a minute? And Eddie, why don't you come up too? I want to be sure that we give you credit and for working so well together. The Parks and Recreation Department here, and Marcia's not here about teams, but it, it's so important, and it does pay off. And Eddie, in your team, you have certainly made a difference with regard to all of the people that come to this community and the, the organizing you do. I don't even know what all you do, but the promotion and, and then you're stuck in administrative meetings.
I commonly, sometimes don't know what I'm doing either.
You're busy.
Been fun with the new centers. You know, we do have this weekend a gymnastics tournament, first one that we're going to have that's going to be pretty good. I call it large because.
Seven fifty?
No, we haven't.
We're going to call it large, but, and I think you did touch on, we do have pickleball coming up in May, and we've got, I think on the books, basketball tournaments in both June and July. So we'll see how those numbers creep. But the outdoor aspect as well, you know, we have a, see, next weekend, we have a youth baseball tournament that right now has got seventy-plus teams that are signed up for that, which is maxing out our fields. They're actually playing over in Womigo as well. So it has been very beneficial, Marcia, out there, you know, beating the bushes, and, you know, our staff and CBB working together to make sure our facilities are well-known and that are available, and I think we're seeing some positive results.
Absolutely, and, and we can tell the story. They're the ones that have to provide the venue. And so Eddie, we really appreciate your work, your team's work, the offerings, and I know you made an announcement, but we are sorely going to miss you. We appreciate your talents and, and know that your work makes a difference, not just for this year, but for many, many years to come. So thank you.
I appreciate that, I do. Yes, I might be leaving, but the facilities are still going to be.
That's right.
There'll still be opportunities.
Well, I wanted to be sure. I know there aren't many of the meetings left you can come to. You're having a retirement farewell, May sixth, I think, yes. And it's important that we recog, maybe we need to do this every meeting, just, you'll be missed, and you've done a good job. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eddie.
Karen, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, to discuss the Enterprise Resource Planning System Update, ERP, with regard to a business, the business process improvement for GFOA analysis findings and recommendations, and Rena Neal is going to be our lead person. GFOA is Government Finance Officers Association, in case there are any mysteries there.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight with us, we have Barry McMeekin, Consulting Practicing Manager with Government Finance Officers Association. Here with us tonight on Zoom, he's based out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. He will be providing an update on the city's Enterprise Resource Planning software project. Over the past ten years, Barry has managed many of GFOA's ERP needs, assessment and system selection projects for large and mid-sized governments. GFOA has over twenty-five years of experience, experience working with municipalities to assist with the transition to migrating to new ERP systems. Included in your packet for this evening was a report providing various assessments conducted to date and next steps in the process, as well as the PowerPoint presentation Barry will go over. I would like to thank Daniella Whitman, our Controller and Project Manager, for this project, for all of her work in helping coordinate the various meetings with staff in GFOA to ensure we have engagement from all the departments throughout the process. I will now turn it over to Barry to present his results. Good evening, Barry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. It's nice to be with you this evening. As Rena said, my name is Barry McMeekin. I am from the Government Finance Officers Association, and just give you a brief background on myself. I'm the Consulting Practice Manager at GFOA. I've, I just passed my twenty-second year anniversary at GFOA, and have been working on these types of projects for those twenty-two years. Prior to working with GFOA, I have twenty-five years of municipal administrative government experience with the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County, where the city of Pittsburgh is. So I'm quite familiar with the processes that we're going to go through with. Anything that you have, questions as we go through it, you know, feel free to ask. Just briefly, give you a little background on GFOA. We've been doing this for twenty-five years, and we've done over five hundred now of these types of projects. I've managed probably between a hundred and two hundred of those, and we only work in government, either municipal government or, you know, commissions and different types of utilities and things of public sector utilities. Just to go through to, briefly, the purpose of the project that we're going to talk about was, you know, to go through the various systems that support the administrative needs of the city of Manhattan, talk about what, you know, what kind of replacement options are actually out there, really get into a little bit on the, the business processes of the city and how the current systems support those business processes, and then talk a little bit about next steps. My big concentration, this is a long PowerPoint presentation, I realize, I can tell you that system assessment PowerPoints are not nearly as interesting as the presentations that you just went through. You know, so I'll try to keep it kind of flowing as close as possible, keep it brief, but give you some idea of what, you know, GFOA has done with, in conjunction with your city staff over the past four or five months. And so if you can hit the next slide. We looked at almost all of the administrative scope throughout the city, and that's all listed here. Finance, all the asset management side of the city, the payroll and human resources, and how the current financial system works in conjunction with the newly implemented Pay-Lossy system. And then we had several meetings with city systems that are, you know, working in conjunction with the financial system or have some touch point or some need to deal with the financial system, and that includes the courts, Parks and Recreation, FIRE, and the main, you know, the big utility billing system that you operate with. Okay. And this kind of identifies the approach that we took to the, to the overall project. As you can see, that star is kind of where we're at right now. We did a, Task One was a detailed deep dive into the various systems, as we said. You know, talking to all the various groups, and we'll go through that in a minute. But the, the two big underlying things that I want to talk about on this slide is just that, you know, from the beginning of this project, the way GFOA works is to try to introduce change management for, you know, the various kind of business processes that systems that we're assessing are going to touch or support or work with. And so that's where that Task One and Task Two came into play. Task Two was develop a plan of action, which is one of the reports that you've received. We presented two main reports to the city. One is a detailed system assessment. The other is a plan of action that kind of is the underlying, you know, document that supports this presentation. But both of them are, if you read both of them, they both have interplay with each other. So now that we've developed those, you know, we're looking at options and recommend, and a main recommendation from GFOA on the city moving forward in determining what they're going to do with all the various systems that were under the scope of the project. And then just one other thing before I move forward with this, and we'll get into this in a little bit more detail as we go through the, as we go through the presentation. The governance of the overall project was also, you know, you'll see in the reports that it's a major issue that we're going to stress as we go forward. Okay, Rena? And as part of this analysis, we worked with, you know, all of the various stakeholders and all the departments and divisions that have any interaction with any of those systems that I showed you on the scope slide a minute ago. We, we took an approach, and, you know, where we're working in kind of two of three meetings. We still have one meeting to complete dependent on what comes out of this meeting. But the first one was to talk about the ASs, processes, and how those systems support them. And then the second was to kind of identify what may, you know, what is available out there to improve and make business processing more efficient at the city, you know, determined upon GFOA best practices that we work with, with groups all across the country, you know, known public sector best practices, and then, you know, all the various companies that we work with in the ERP industry and their best business practices that are available in this, their software. We completed a number of meetings upward north of thirty of those, and had, you know, interaction from all the various staffs for each of those functional areas that were under scope. Okay. Some key findings, the legacy financial accounting fleet management is a combination AS400 central square. It's kind of outdated, the way it's working currently. It lacks functionality, clearly lacks functionality, found in modern enterprise systems. It's, it's kind of, you know, approaching what might be called its antiquity date, or getting close to approaching its useful life, the end of its useful life. It's already been, part of it's been replaced by that third bullet point, the Pay-Lossy system that went in, is still being kind of implemented at the city currently. And, you know, we'll talk a little bit about what's needed as far as interfacing to that system. And then, you know, there's just some overall lack of, due to the fact that there's this myriad and hodgepodge of systems being utilized by city staff, and that's normal. We see that anywhere we go, you know, as any of our clients. You have a lot of systems because you have a lot of different business lines. You have a lot of different responsibilities, and so therefore, you know, staff has done their due diligence and went out and got the systems that they need to support their business functions. And that is certainly not abnormal, but, you know, it also represents a lot of different things, a lot of redundancy in process, a lot of need for reconciliation between systems and spreadsheets and different databases. So that's kind of a, a major key finding of what we found in our various meetings that we conduct. Okay? And I won't go into this too deeply, but, you know, just based on what I just said, all of various hodgepodge myriad of systems that you do maintain, there's a lack of connectivity between the main areas, finance, HR, budget, which means that, you know, you're, once again, there's multiple entries into multiple, multiple systems, which requires people to, you know, go back and forth between those and make sure that they're working properly. You know, getting into a little bit more detail, there's some difficulty with the overall function of capital assets at the city. And project and grant accounting are not integrated into the main financial functions. And, you know, as you know, being, you know, members of the commission, obviously you know that projects and grants are a main business line in the city, so I'm not going to educate you on that, you already know that. But the systems that operate, or at least maintain and track those areas, are not integrated into the overall city financials. Okay? And, you know, just to go into it a little bit deeper, there's, you know, that continuous lack of integration throughout the city. You face, due to that fact, you face some real challenges generating the, the, the reports and the analysis that's needed to maintain a city of your size with the complex amount of business lines that you maintain, services you provide. You know, the system as it is today lacks the capability to really give you the, give the managers and the executives the detailed information that they need. The big thing being that the budget information is tracked outside of your main financial system. So, you know, budget to actual reporting, things of that nature, although they're accomplished through a, a number of different tasks, they're not easily, you know, easily adaptable to what you need as far as analysis is concerned. Okay? Rena? And just, you know, some other areas that are not tied into the system or not, or are maintained kind of outside of the system. Contracting, which once again is an important function of any city, paying your vendors, there's, you know, vendors are getting paid, but once again, there's not an integrated component between procurement and AP for, you know, modern functionality, such as being able to match documentation between invoice requisition, receiving document, all the various things that are built in to modern enterprise systems. Okay? All right, so where does that leave us? And I'll go into a little bit more detail on each of these, but these are kind of the four main options that, you know, as we did our research and went, looked at, you know, our background and. that, you know, as we did our research and went, looked at, you know, our background and where, you know, we've worked recently and where various vendors are in the marketplace. There's actually four major options available to the system. And there's ways of scoping these that we'll get into that, you know, might present a kind of hybrid of these options at some point. But, you know, obviously the first one is to maintain the status quo. Continue with the, the systems that you have. You've got a lot, a lot of sunk cost in those. You also have some maintenance costs for each of those systems that, you know, we talked about briefly in the, at the beginning of this presentation. Your second option is to go to, you know, the more modern central square solution, which is their one solution product has been dealt, developed over time. Central Square has had a number of different changes over the past five to 10 years. Obviously the big one going from Sun Garden to Central Square and the way they were acquired in the marketplace. But, you know, the way they are moving is to a one solution cloud system that you could conceivably upgrade to. We'll get into that. There's some issues with that. Option three is to go out into marketplace, which is generally what GFOA recommends. But we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that. And, and that means one of two things, and, and that is what option three and option four represent. One is to go out and procure and implement an ERP solution that includes or tries to include the main business areas that we talked about beyond financials. And that includes your enterprise asset management, your customer information or utility billing system, and your permitting land file, business licensing type of solution. And that option three is looking at that as kind of a universal RFP into the marketplace to try to acquire all of those. Option four is similar to that, but a little different in the fact that it's to procure and implement a new ERP solution that includes enterprise asset management because you have a lot of operating departments that need to have, that need, that have detailed tracking needs for city assets and for what happens to city assets over their life cycle. And then with that procure at some point best of breed functionality to replace the utility billing system and the permitting and business licensing, as you said, land file system. So four main options, we'll go through them, you know, a little bit as we go through the next few slides. Rena, okay. So obviously first one is to do nothing. And as you can see up there, there's a lot of things that would occur with that. One is that you would just maintain these myriad of systems that aren't necessarily even systems. You know, some things that we find as we go through, as we went through the various functions was that there's still some manual processing at the city, which leads to some double entry or triple entry into other systems and then some online filing or actual manual filing in some instances. Those things would all be maintained. And, you know, what we find from a GFOA perspective and what we found over the past 25 years as we've completed multiples of these type of projects is that the more, the longer you maintain that environment, the more fractured that environment becomes. And, and you're kind of at the, you know, towards the back end of that process even where, you know, people are creating spreadsheets to report, people are creating, creating spreadsheets to track. You're getting, you're getting some areas where you're going out and getting, getting other commercial off the, off the shelf systems, similar to ERP systems. So that will just continue to, to spiral. And you'll continue to, you know, have the, the inefficiencies that come with that. You know, there's not a lot of interfacing. There's not a lot of integration between those systems. So you'll continue to have that need to rekey information and on the back end of it, reconcile that information. You have IT staff that is dedicated to managing the systems. That's not necessarily where the business environment, the administrative and the technology environment is going today. You know, you have hardware on premise. You're going to continue to process transactions kind of inefficiently or try to make do or try to fix processes where you can. And you're going to continue to have to have the resources to manage all those different systems as they continue to spiral and interact with each other. And then at some point in time, the, the major central square kind of applications will, will no longer be supported since, as we said, they're moving to that integrated environment. Okay. Second one is kind of similar to that, whereas you would just go and try to, to market, try to go into the market with just the one solution product, which is the central square related project, which is just, you know, it's a, it's a reimplementation. It's not anything to do with upgrading or anything. You're going to have to go through and find implementation resources to work with that. It may not be the, the best fit anymore to the city. And so there are some significant issues with doing that without any real pros, to be quite honest with you, other than the fact that you might be under what was once, you know, Sun Garden is now Central Square. You may be still under that flagship, but it certainly would not be anything near to what you have today. And then obviously there's that whole hodgepodge of AS400 related software. Some is central square, some is not. Some things haven't been applied. And then you're dealing with, you know, as we talked about, a lot of other off the shelf systems that aren't talking to the current system. So I just want to, you know, for this one, stress that bottom bullet point, which stresses that, that this is a new implementation. It's, it's not anything to do with gathering or gaining anything from just upgrading a product. Okay. Option three is, you know, as I said, in, in most instances or in a lot of instances, not necessarily all today. But normally our, our recommendation is to go through some level of a competitive ERFP process when you're dealing with these type of systems. That's best business practice as far as GFOA is concerned because you get a competitive market look. You get to look at different softwares, but more importantly, you get to look at different implementation methodologies and different implementation scopes. So, you know, we, what we're saying in option three is to go through that competitive process and develop specifications for not only your financials, but as we talked about earlier, your asset management, your UBS, your community development or permit and business license related functions. There are those, there are still vendors in the marketplace that can provide a good deal of that scope. Not necessarily all vendors are going to be able to provide all of that scope. So there's a couple of things that, that we find, you know, kind of as an asset to the city and going this way. And that is it gives you the, the opportunity to really look at the entire market. And it gives you an, an, an opportunity to look at the entire market with the baseline unique needs of the city covered as far as administration is concerned. And then the other part of that in which is really going to come, become more important and has become much more important as these systems have become more prevalent throughout, you know, the business world is that you're going to be able to look at different implementation vendors and what is the best strategy for the city, which is much more important than even the software solution. Who implements it? How they work with the city staff? How they transfer knowledge to the city staff? How the city accepts the system based on how it's integrated? How business process is taken into account by your implementer and by city staff is much more important than the overall solution that you choose. Because you're looking at this and, and GFOA, you know, our main recommendation in any of these projects is to treat them as a business transformation project. Do not treat them as a replacement of software. Obviously the, the software is an important piece of this, but it's not the, the most important piece of it. The way enterprise software has been refined over the past 20 years that many of our, you know, clients that go out into the marketplace, although there are still differentiators in, in the software market. There are a great, you know, there are a great deal of similarities as far as business processes concerned. But that's kind of option three. And then Rena, if you can move to option four. Option four is pretty similar. As we said, the difference being that you kind of get your main administrative functions replaced upfront. And then you kind of get, and, you know, in, explore into the best of breed market on the, at least the UBS side and possibly the permitting side dependent upon some other systems that are currently being operated. For example, FileMaker Pro at, at the fire department and some other entities that are utilizing other systems. But in this case, you know, you get your main administrative needs taken care of and your main operational needs taken care of. And then you explore the other marketplaces and how you might refine scope as far as that's concerned. So it, it's not a major difference from option three. It's just looking at the overall solution stack a little bit differently in how you go into the marketplace. And it, and, you know, as you'll see in the, the estimated cost that we put forward, option four is, is a, will probably turn out to be a bit more expensive than option three. Because best of breed software is deeper. It's, it's, and with that, you know, depth of software functionality comes the need to implement that depth of software functionality, which means that there are increased costs with taking that track. So that's kind of the four main things that, you know, we pointed out as being where, why, where the city might have options. And to be quite honest, option one and option two are not really conducive to operating a modern city that has the service lines that you folks are working with, that you're providing, the complexity of the city as it is today. You know, it's, those two are going to continue to kind of spin out of control the other way than to move you towards more efficiency in how you proceed and how you process administratively. Okay, Rena? So that, what's that lead us to? That leads to our recommendation being that you go forward with a competitive process. You, the next step in that would be to really refine the detailed business needs of the city, the detailed business requirements that would, would be attached to any RFP, right? So the second bullet point talks about being able to fully investigate the competitive enterprise system market. And, you know, there, there's a lot of advantages to doing that today. And, you know, and the biggest piece of that being, as we said, we'll talk about the implementation. And what we're anticipating is that all those AS400 solutions would at some point be replaced by a system that utilizes either a cloud or a SaaS environment. SaaS environment being a more subscription related software as a service environment. GFOA does, you know, multiples of these types of projects a year. And in the past two or three, probably a little bit further out than that, three or four years back, we have not seen any on premise proposals to any of our clients, no matter what the size of the client was. And, and we have, you know, large governments, small governments, everything in between that we work with. So the, the marketplace is moving towards the cloud system as, you know, subscription services. That's the way it's going to continue to focus at least for the near future. So, you know, what would that, you know, you stay on your current software and it definitely would reduce your IT support and you're not, you're no longer in the hardware business with cloud and, and SaaS kind of application environment. So that's your big, you know, you're, you're aligning yourself with the marketplace. You're working with the way the marketplace is going under this recommendation. Okay, Rena, can you go forward? And, you know, that these, I'm, I'm not going to go into full detail here, but, you know, why modernize using cloud technology? There's a lot of reasons. You know, that first bullet point is just, you know, a, a big thing to, to any business, but certainly a big thing nowadays to governments, which is, you know, the improvement of overall security, being able to improve your internal controls and compliance. And then, as I said, you know, we, we always say, you know, take these projects under as business transformation. And that is kind of what you get out of today's cloud technology. Being able to streamline your business processes, standardize them as much as possible. It gets you some, you know, faster decisions, gets you some better analysis capability. You certainly get some better experience as far as how your users interact with the systems. And, you know, you're going to have a dependable cost model over the life of, of the subscription. There are, you know, many vendors out there in the marketplace that can provide, you know, these type of, of functions, these type of services to the city. Okay. And, you know, along with that, it gets you something that we found to be, you know, as our overall assessment went forward, you know, there's some fracturing of business process at the city. You know, what these type of applications do is they enforce some level of standardization. Now there's ways around that standardization or there are ways to develop things in the software, these type of software services that, you know, allows you to have some differences. For example, in workflow or roles and responsibilities, how users interact or what they actually see, you know, what their view of the software is. But, you know, the, the standardization that you get out of it in the major business processes, you're receipting your requisition to payment, which we said is, you know, not currently kind of a, a fully integrated area, budget, how budget is operated, where it's now external to the system. You know, you're going to be working almost entirely under a standardized budget process that gets you number one, some efficiency in how the process works. But more importantly, some efficiency in how you get analysis of the various, you know, spending lines that occur at the, at the city. Okay. And I'm not, you know, once again, you can go through this on your own, but, you know, standardized processes are the best way to support these systems. I can tell you that, you know, my, my role in this organization and GFOA is generally in system oversight, system implementation oversight, where I work with our clients on the actual implementation, ensuring that whatever they purchased or whatever statement of work was developed is actually what's implemented at our clients. And, you know, one of the main issues that we find with any of these system type implementations is that the more de-standardization or the more you allow departments to go on their different separate ways, the more difficult and the more risky these system implementations become. So, you know, there are, as I said, there are some configurable business processes or business, you know, business kind of applications in these systems. They do enforce or, or they work better if you can get to standardized, efficient business processes. In many instances, they enforce them because you're no longer able to customize these systems. One of the things different with a SaaS type software services that you cannot, you cannot really customize the baseline product. There are always, you know, you're on a standard quarterly, normally a quarterly upgrade process where you get new functionality based on either, you know, what the city or similar cities require. But, you know, one thing you don't do is, is customize the base software. So enforcing standardization is kind of one of your biggest efficiency that you would get out of a modern system. Okay. All right. And then just some other things, you know, centralization versus decentralization. Once again, these systems will enforce answers to where you either centralized business functions or where you allow departments to, you know, kind of do their own processing. Most of these systems can support either or a hybrid. But normally, you know, centralization enforces what I just talked about, that standardization of business process. So in many areas, you're going to be looking to at least centralize certain administrative functions under main kind of process, where main kind of areas such as finance. And then down the bottom, there's a big, you know, as I said earlier, implementation is much more, you know, important to these type of systems nowadays. Putting together teams that look at process improvement in the city and then relying on your current subject matter experts, many of whom, you know, took part in meetings and will continue. You know, took part in meetings and will continue, um, as we go forward to take part in meetings. Um, getting those, those folks involved early and getting them involved often and letting them have. Some decision making and at least as far as their own areas are concerned. Um, is a great way to enforce change management, um, uh, in the way the business processes change under a new system. Okay? All right, so you know, you're gonna, the, the, these projects are complex. Um, they require adequate staffing as you, and as we get into. Cost in a minute, we'll talk about, you know, the variance in cost and a lot of that has to do with how. Um, resource allocation goes both internally and for your implementation partner. Um, but you know, you're going to, if you're going to take, undertake one of these, um, transformation projects, city resources will be required. Um, to make sure that your business processes are addressed properly and that you work, you know, the, in the various departments that need. Um, these administrative systems, they work the best for them, um, you know, your implementation partner is helpful. Um, is extremely important to get these systems up and running, but at the end of the day, um, you know, you're in. Regardless of on-prem or, or in the cloud, it's going to be your people that are responsible. For maintaining the overall business processes, um, the next two are the most important things that you would probably hear. In this entire presentation, and that is that city executives have to provide support. To one of these projects and resources, um, and, and know what's going on in the project. But more, e- even more important than that is the governance structure, um, over one of these projects, it's critical. In these implementations, there's lightning fast need for decision making. Um, if the governance structure is inadequate, these systems will fail and these implementations will fail. Um, the biggest risk we find, um, the two biggest risks we find in these type of implementations is one. Inade- inadequate governance and two inadequate resources that have the proper ability to make decisions. Uh, you know, if, if you don't have both of those things, I would suggest not taking the recommendation. Cause you're, you're eminently risky, um, i- it's an eminently risky undertaking without those two things. Okay? All right, so, um, cost estimates, as you can see, there's a wide gulf and the reason for that. Is that, um, you know, at, at GFOA, we kind of try to look at. Since we do these a lot, we're continuously receiving, uh, proposals and those proposals obviously. Have the related costs with them, um, and what we've been seeing in the marketplace lately. Is a wide kind of divergence between costs, a wide gulf in what's proposed, uh, for example, I just worked. Um, you know, just less than a month ago, um, received proposals from, uh, that's probably a little bit bigger. Than that, well, probably double your size, um, in California, a city and the, the difference between the low cost. Um, proposer and the, the largest cost proposer was five million to fourteen million. So a nine million dollar gulf between the highest proposal and the lowest proposal. Um, you know, obviously that's a little bit higher than these estimates are concerned and honestly with scoping. And, you know, the, the, um, processes that you would go through in the next steps. I, I would basically look for these costs to, um. To end up being between the average and the low, um, not towards the high side, some of the high side. Um, the, the high cost here are outliers sometimes in, in what we get. As far as proposers are concerned, and a lot of that has to do what I talked about earlier, resource. Um, allocations and how vendors, um, you know, prospective implementation vendors. Look at either your internal resources or more importantly, what's costly, um, the external resources, their resources. Um, and so it's, a lot of this has to do with the factor of what they propose, um, as far as. You know, the overall staffing of the project from the implementation side, so, um. We think these will refine down, as I said, um, and you'll get closer to the average and low, so. Um, the, the one thing that'll probably go closer to the average, uh, overall is, is the subscription fee. Um, I don't think you'll see the high side on any of these, I, I, I really wouldn't suggest seeing, I, I wouldn't recommend. Going with the high side on any of these and I have had, um, you know, a lot of different, um, large gaps. In costing and I've never seen obviously any of our clients go with the largest cost. Um, there are, there are more effective implementers that look at your RFP and price it properly. And that's what I think you'll see here, um, at the city at some point, if we, if we go do our due diligence. Um, build the requirements properly, scope the project properly, um, and then go through a competitive process. Um, you'll get, you'll get closer to the low side of these cost estimates than you will to the high. And so, you know, the, the, and the other piece of this is, as I said earlier, the going with option four and just strictly. Best of breed and, you know, there are a lot of things at play there, um, especially concerning, um, the permitting and business licensing. That, that we're going to have to look at to refine scope, um, going forward with the RFP, but those best of breeds. Um, probably will cost more, um, double than, and, and then either an integrated. Um, component in an ERP system or, um, the other way that we can structure these RFPs. Is to, even if it's not an integrated, um, system that we bring, we make sure. That the main ERP vendor proposes, um, partners that they control. Um, to provide some of those best of breeds, so as I said earlier, there's kind of a hybrid in between. Um, where you would work with a vendor to propose, and you know, for example, the oracles in the world may have partners. That deliver utilities or, um, you know, the, the, um, Central Square probably has. Partners that, um, would provide things that they don't necessarily have, so. Uh, you know, by refining your, refining the RFP, which we're working to do right now. And presenting the business specifications slash functional requirements in a manner. That supports your administrative processes, but also make sure, um, you know, targets exactly what you need in the software market. Um, we'll be able to refine these costs down. Okay? Um, so we're, you know, we're, we're already into this project, um, you know, you're, the project started with the beginning of the assessment. Uh, you know, so we're, we're looking at business process improvements, there's going to be a lot of things that come with that and, and a lot of that has to do. With why we focus on that governance structure, because there may be needs for policy changes. Um, you know, there, in, in some instances, there may be needs, um, you know, for changes to, uh, you know. City rules and regulations that have to go in front of, um, you folks, so. There are a lot of different things that are going to occur in, in where we're moving right now, uh, that second bullet point is, is extremely important. Um, you don't want to put your major emphasis on the software side, very rarely do these. Um, implementations or these projects fail because the software didn't provide something. Um, and, you know, you could, I, I've seen a lot of projects that, uh, things get scoped and then they don't get implemented. Simply because they fall by the wayside and, and that's not due to the software, that's due to the implementation. Um, implementation, as it says, is the, in the bottom, is a far greater risk in almost any of these projects that you undertake. Okay? All right, so finishing out, um, success factors, just, you know, quickly reiterate executive sponsorship. Um, engaging anybody that's going to have that, an, an enterprise system has large tentacles. Reaches out to everybody in the organization, engaging the organization is a success factor. Um, working to improve business, make it a business transformation project. Um, you know, we've talked a number of times about making it a manageable scope. And, and not biting off more than the, the city can chew at any one time. Um, you know, from our perspective, a competitive RFP and, and a fair, um, you know, a fair selection process. That, you know, gives everybody the, the proper chance to be evaluated fairly and then at the end of the day. Um, a finalist chosen based on fair criteria, um, at the end of the day, a well-negotiated contract, one of the things. That GFOA is always on the hook for with any of our clients is to develop a detailed statement of work. That any implementer has to follow, um, that is, that to us is the most important thing. That will come out of this project is that statement of work that you know exactly what you're going to get, you know exactly what. The city responsibilities are and you also know exactly what you're getting from your implementation partner. Um, any of these, you know, that, these are the ways to mitigate risk. Um, you know, when we first started undertaking, I, I did an ERP project at the city of Pittsburgh in nineteen ninety-four. We were doing purchasing on a laptop, it hadn't even been integrated to PeopleSoft at the time. And, you know, and at that time, these things were much more risky, um, projects, today, any vendor that proposes to you. Is going to have some level of background in, in project success, uh, you know, they're not all. Uh, you know, one hundred percent successful or one hundred percent on time and on budget, although if you're a well-defined statement of work. Will get you close to that, um, but these things, um, if you undertake all of them, excuse me. Um, you'll, you'll be much, you'll be in the, uh, the lower end of the risk spectrum with this project. Okay? All right, so just where we're going next and we're in the process of doing this is where, we're, um, putting together detailed specifications. Um, and, you know, kind of at the beginning of putting a structural RFP together, but obviously that, that would be. Based on, you know, where the city decides to go next, um, once that would occur, then, you know, there are a lot of things that get built in. To a request for proposal that would happen fairly rapidly and then we're going to be meeting with the teams once again. Um, to ensure that number one, um, we adequately addressed, um, business process, so Rena and Daniella. Um, still want to make sure that everybody gets a voice in this, um, we concur with that a hundred percent. The more people that you can involve, the less risky these projects become, um, you know, so we're going to be doing that and address, talking a little bit more. About business pro- process and then we'll be working with, um, you know, what kind of things are coming out of that as far as work. Is concerned and then the overall recommendations. Okay? All right, uh, I know that was a little bit lengthy, I'm sorry about that, it was. Um, built out to kind of give you a good feel for how things are working administratively at the city of Manhattan. So, um, questions, I realized that I look like I have a halo over my head, but that's due to the sunshine. Coming in behind me, I didn't beam down from heaven, um. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Yeah, the, um, now when you're going through your presentation, it, at one part you said you were recommending option three. But then later you were talking about possibly bringing in best of breed. As part of what we were going to be looking at, so kind of curious about that, cause. It seems like if everything's integrated and it works together, that's easier to implement, it's all more or less one system. When you start bringing in best of breed, lots of times those are different systems. That can have different structures and you have to link those systems together and it can get more complicated, having said that. You know, I've, in private industry, I've done this a lot and I ran warehouses and I always wanted best of breed. And I never wanted the ERP warehouse system.
No, I, I mean, I agree with you wholeheartedly, I, I mean, there are. The difference be, the difference in opinion in a lot of these systems and I, I've done several studies on these with different. Clients is that the operational people lean more towards best of breed. Whereas the administrative people who want that detailed information, um, that integrated information. Lean more towards the enterprise, what we're going to be doing is we'll kind of, um, you know, the, the way to, to get your answer to that. Is to work with all these various groups to build the proper requirements and, and GFOA has a, 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 a large. Bank of requirements, we know what's available in the marketplace, but what we're looking for from your administrative staff. Is, you know, what are the nuances to how the city has to operate? And what, you know, how does that affect you as far as systems are concerned? So that's kind of where we're going with the next steps in the process, but that should help us refine. That, that also will help that whole process of refining the scope. And making sure that, you know, if, if it's more, if, if it, if, you know, it's so detailed that a best of breed would fit. We might pull back and wait, um, but if it's not that detailed or some other system that the city's using. Is providing, you know, a, a great deal of that side of the functionality, we may then determine to build it in, but. It, it, if you allow the process to play out properly, um, you'll usually get a, a scope that's refined. That gets everybody at least, you know, somewhere near to agreement on this is the way to go forward, there's going to be. Some difference of opinion just based on what you said, you know, if you're, if you're, if a hundred percent of what you do involves. Making sure that inventory is proper, you want the best system that fits inventory. Um, and how it affects, you know, financials and procurement and other things that go with that. May not be of importance to you, whereas on the other side, how things, you know, how min-max is met and how it generates. Things to procurement may be more important, so you, you know, what we try to guide you through here. Is to try to find the sweet spot in between those two areas, so you get some agreement between, some of these things could even pop up to the executive level. Um, you know, to, not normally to your level, but at some points they bank, um, you know, that's the whole idea of having that governance structure in place. So that if you have those questions on, um, scoping, you know, you can at least get a, a, an overall decision on it.
Okay, so you're still working through that process, you already, you haven't made an evaluation yet. Whether it requires best of breed or, or not at this point in time, that's still to come with more of the stuff you have to iron out.
You're correct, yes.
Then for the type of work you're, you're talking about. And you have like the implementation partner or what I might call an integrator, do a lot of the software companies themselves offer that service? And you're kind of look at the service they offer plus what the integrator may do or is, in this industry now, it's pretty much an implementation partner and an. Integrator for any implementation that you're doing.
Uh, for the most part, you're correct, there are still, um, you know, there's, there's probably one or two. That, that may propose that actually implement their own software and only implement their own software, Tyler, for example, has very few. Implementation partners, um, but, you know, for the, for ones that do have an implementation arm. And then, you know, also have other implementers, we generally find that the other implementers are, are better than the. Um, provided soft, and it, it's going to be, you know, a different arm of the organization anyway, but. You're, you're right, there are a few that may propose, um, their own implementation services too, for example, there's. Oracle Consulting and there's Oracle, um, you know, cloud services, which is their software. Um, but generally we find that the integrate, the independent third-party integrators. Um, come to the table with better strategies for, especially for kind of mid-level government side.
And you said that the risk now, you know, it was, it was much worse than the old days than it is. Now, again, in the private sector, I saw a lot of crash and burns on this, I remember when Nike implemented SAP, I worked for Foot Locker, it substantially hurt our business. Shut down some of their Canadian operations, cause it didn't go well over there and.
Yeah, for sure, and, 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 you know, the big, the, the big failure that we always played up back. Um, you know, even back in the city of Pittsburgh days was, um, I think it was Hershey adapting ERP and not being able to track their candy. Right before Halloween was, you know, when they went live, so, uh, you know, a failure there is, is a bad area to fail. Um, you know, there's still risk, I, you know, I'd be lying to you if I, I sat there and told you there's no risk. There's zero risk to the city of Manhattan, there's risk to anybody that undertakes a major project like this. But there are certainly ways to minimize that risk, um, as I said before, a, a good. Um, well-developed statement of work that clearly identifies the assumptions of what the city of Manhattan has to provide. And what the implementer has to provide is your best way to eliminating that risk. And then the bigger piece of it is being able to make those decisions, these, these implementations are all. Built on a series of decisions, where do I go with, you know, um, matching as far as procurement is concerned, do I? Do I undertake formalized receiving, which if I don't, I can't match within any of these systems. So, you know, all of those things are decisions that you may not be doing today, but you've got to, you know, for, for general decisions, you've got to give. Your team members some capability to make decisions based on what their, what their overall administrative duties are. And then other things, you know, obviously scope and things that affect price. That, you know, by rule, that has to roll up either through the executive committee or up to you folks, I mean, that, that's, that's just the way that you're. I mean, that, that's, that's just the way that you're, you're structured. So, if you have that structure in place, and you, you, all your team members know what they can decide, what they can't decide, when they got to escalate it up, that governance structure. Once you have that in place, you're really, you're, you're really minimizing your risk immensely in, in one of these projects. I, I, you know, I do it a lot, and, and I do the, and as I said, I do a lot of these oversights. Where, you know, GFOA offers services where, and it's probably about fifty percent of our clients undertake it, fifty percent don't, where we kind of work as a design-build kind of contractor, where we sit, oh, we developed a statement of work in conjunction with your people. We now sit back and make sure that statement of work is what gets delivered to the city of Manhattan. And, you know, I can tell you, the biggest, where we get, where we see the biggest, not, not even overall failure, but failure to get what you paid for is in, is in areas where you don't have a decision-making process in place. And so, you know, we get to the back end of it, and everybody says, well, we don't, we're, this isn't the business process we wanted. Well, you know, and then the implementer's pointing a finger saying, the team members didn't come to the meetings, or, you know, nobody spoke up in a meeting. Those are the kind of things you can avoid, you know, with clear rules and responsibilities of who's going to do what during the implementation.
Yeah, I usually found it was the, you know, the modifications that can cause that cost to go up and cause a failure. Now, you said now with the SaaS and the cloud, you don't get the modifications as much. They came up with a new name, extension, so you build it on the outside to make it look like you modified the system, but those still complicate everything.
Sure.
Later, later on down.
Yeah, that, you're right. And, and I mean, the biggest part of it is configuration, you know. So, you goes through a design process where all those teams, and a lot of the things that we've done already will kind of support the design going forward. So, you know, we'll ask in the RFP, is GFOA's completed work on, for example, future process maps? We want you to look at how we would like to work in the, how we would like to work more efficiently, and we would like you to try to build the system towards that. Areas where there's gaps, you're going to point that out to us. But, you know, we want to make sure that you follow where we want to go in the business process as much as possible. But then, we want to make sure that your folks understand that, you know, in some instances, they're going to have to follow the flow of the overall, you know, way that the chosen solution operates.
I just say, you know, thanks a lot for the presentation. I mean, I think you've got a really good guy here, knows what he's doing. And I think what he's saying is really true. And this is a really big deal for the city to put in and get right. And it's going to take a lot of time and dedication and resources to do it. And the thing that he mentions about decision-making is really important. I know going through these, you get in a conference room pilot, and everyone's sitting there this way, that way. I've literally had people stand up on the desk, the person you put in charge, and says, this is the way we're doing it. And that's the thing, there has to be a czar for every one of these things to finally just say, this is it. Conversation is over. This is the way it is going forward. So, I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you. Now, I think, you know, I think, thank you for the presentation, by the way. One of the, as I was reading your, the packet that was given to us, several things we've asked over the years, such as contracts, you know, for all of these items, contractual agreements that we have, and when we're looking at our budget especially, or can you put all of these budgets together and show us this, or all the capital improvement budgets together and show us this? I think maybe this makes it a little bit easier, as we, when we talk about integration, and also from department to department. So there's more collaboration, and the items are the same, so now it's not redundant, was one of the words that was consistently used as well. And we've also heard we need to upgrade from AS four hundred, because we've had it forever. And we also have a funding source this time. So I think that makes it a little bit more palatable as well. And, and training is the biggest part. No matter what industry you're in, you're so used to your habits. So even if it's the best, and it's supposed to be easy, it's not as easy when you're trying to break old habits. And I think that's going to take the longest, it's going to take a lot of stamina to integrate all of that in and onboard everybody into that process. So when we talk about, it was that we need to hire an implamation, implementation consultant. So what does that mean, an implementation consultant? How long do they last? Is it a one-year, five-years? Is it for good? What, what does that mean, an implementation consultant?
That, that's the, the firm that you would bring in, that work, that has detailed knowledge of the, of the software and how it operates. And so they can, they can guide you on your design decisions. And then, that, you know, their bigger area of concentration is on converting data, developing any interfaces of which you're going to have a few, because you do have some systems that have, that are going to have the need of touchpoints to the enterprise system, biggest one being Paylosty, obviously. You know, but they work with that. They also provide, normally in the environment that you're talking about, they do what is called Train the Trainer, where they would train your team members to then roll out training to the rest of the end-users at the city of Manhattan. So they have a, a part there. They also have a part kind of in taking you through a series of different tests of the system. You know, with, with your people being the per, once you get past the conference room pilot, which was mentioned earlier, most of the testing is carried out by city staff. But a lot of the things that go into testing, developing the scripts, that falls on the implementation partner. So the implementation partner is doing all the, you know, the basic work of building the system out from where it's at. I mean, once you, you know, once you would set, once you would work with a software, software and choose a software, the software would then, you know, you'd be given access to it. But you'd be given access to the baseline software, not, as we talked about, the business, the, the transformed business processes of the city of Manhattan. The implementer is, is there to get you the, the transformed business processes within the software. Get it configured.
So.
And get your folks trained.
So, once there's an RFP and you have somebody working on all of these things, I don't know how dated our own computers or laptops or any of that is. Would, would there be a need to throw all those out and purchase new ones? If it's a new software, would it just go with any type of laptops we have right now, or is that another cost?
No, normally, that's not a cost, because generally, it's the, the way SaaS products work today is, is with, you know, the major browsers that, that you work with over the implement, you know, over the internet. So there are, you know, most of this is made available through the internet, through, you know, specific browsers. And, and there's very little technology that goes with that, other than, you know, maintaining, maintaining what is a significant communication channel to your software-as-a-service provider. That has to be maintained, obviously, by the city. But beyond that, you don't have, you know, maintaining databases or anything. A lot of that stuff is, is now part of your overall service level agreement with your software services provider. And that's, that's another thing that GFOA would assist you with, is getting a, a proper SLA in place, the service level agreement.
And I just need a little bit more explanation about the utility billing and the permitting for business licensing. You said we can do that separately, or we can do it together. Was that right?
Yes, and, and that's, that's kind of the major difference between option two and option three, and what, what we had been discussing earlier. You know, we're going, we're going to build out requirements for all of them. So the specifications for those systems will be there. What, what we're going to do is make a final determination. Is it more, you know, i- is it easier to work and, and go out into the marketplace and make sure that, number one, the software either proposes an integrated product, or as I said earlier, they propose a partner who provides, say, for example, utility billing? Because there's, there's different markets, there, there's different functionality stacks within each one of these softwares. You know, your basic financials are in all of them. But who provides enterprise asset management, for example? Some companies may do it with a built-in component, some may do it with, you know, a third-party partner. Those are the kind of things that we'll make a decision for once we've gotten all the requirements put in place.
Okay, yeah, I think that explains it a little bit better for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Reddy, I would like to say, like, with Sun Guard, now Central Square, we would have, we had to deal with some of those decisions with our, at one time it was called RecTrack, and then we migrated to CivicRec. So Central Square did not have a product. They had a TPA, a third-party group that provided, and they were Vermont system. So, anything that we needed that the actual system didn't provide, they would have suggested vendors to partner with. And if not, then we would go off and find our own software. And that's why we are, as Barry mentioned, multiply ti- multiple times, hodgepodge, myriad of systems. We have just gone away from the things that either Central Square has provided and are, and is integrated, or they have their third-party provider, and then the departments have found their own solutions to meet their needs.
It hasn't been comprehensive for everybody to utilize the same ones, or maybe they're
I think.
Like when you say hodgepodge.
Yeah, so initially, twenty-four, twenty-five years ago, I think that comprehensive study and review was there. And then as new people came on, times changed, we go to conferences, we see what's available out there, not buying into the current product and the system. Barry mentioned, you know, Central Square has evolved in terms of the, the industry vendors, different vendors picking them up, but also the type of system that it is. It is a IBM system, green screen. It is a special type of a system. And those individuals that are versed in that are, have retired. So, when we purchased that system twenty-five years ago, all those individuals are gone. We currently have one staff member that is dedicated to assisting finance with our needs related to the I-series. But he had to be trained on that. And so if we have any other issues related to the system, we would have to contact Central Square to get the support we need. And it is a ticket-based process. It requires follow-up to get your questions answered, because again, they don't have that level of support anymore. Their individuals are retiring, and they're focusing on their one solution product.
Yeah, yeah, I think the staff time could be used better, instead of trying to do all of that. If you say twenty, twenty-five years, and I think that's where a lot of organizations were stuck, because it gets more expensive each year, and we think, oh, we can't do it this year, we can't do it this year, we can't do it, and then it's twenty-five years. So I think that's probably where we're at right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, did you have any comments?
No, I was just thinking, I, I did some of this at the, you know, at Barton Community College. We switched systems, I think, three times over twenty years.
Oh, wow.
To, to, to upgrade them. And I understand, you know, you, you've got to have a plan, because, and, and so I, I like the way that was outlined there. But, you know, my personal thought on this is that I lean towards the idea, my, my experience at Barton, is, you know, you get one system, and it talks to everybody. And if you get something outside of there, we, we use a thing called plugins. You know, and, and so if an outside vendor was going to be used, it had to, you know, basically plug in, and interface one-hundred percent seamless. And we did that on a couple of things with our learning management systems, be- because video kept upgrading so fast, you know, that the original system couldn't, couldn't take care of that. But, but I think, you know, with this extra funding we've got, you know, now's the time to do this, and it, it needs to be comprehensive. And the only other thing that I didn't see here is, you know, really got a, a lot of people talk to me about customer service, you know, utility billing. And I think personally, what we got right now is very marginal, because, you know, I can't go online and even see how much I'm paying for different things. It just has one line, and I understand we're going to change that in a year anyway, so I wasn't worried about fixing it right now. But a lot of people had their hair on fire out there about that.
Yeah.
And so that, that's very important that we get that fixed. But, but, but also, you know, people have, have said they wanted to be able to, and I think you mentioned it on Parks and Rec, you know, is go down to the Discovery Center and, and buy a Discovery Center card, and a, and a zoo card, and a pool pass, and, and just integrate it all into one. And so I think we, we're going to need somebody just look at the customer service, you know, outside. Because I understand, you know, we got HR and finance, and that's all internal. But, but let's have somebody really look at, okay, what about our, our customer, the citizens, and, and that interface to make it more of a friendly environment? And that'll save us a lot of time, because we won't get complaints, you know, all of us in the staff, whatever. So I, I'd like to see that done, but, but clearly, we got to go down this route. And it's not, it's not a case of buying software and turn on a switch. It's, it, it's, it's, it's a process, and you got to get everybody involved. And, and, you know, I always talk to Deming Management System. Before you buy one of these, you know, talk to the guy that's actually shoveling the asphalt or whatever. You know, I mean, that, that, that's key. Who is, who is the person actually doing the job? And be sure that their needs are met, because the guys in the headquarters never have it right. Learned that a long time ago. You got to go right down to where the guy's getting his hands dirty and ask him, what is it you need? And if we can integrate that, we'll have an excellent system in the end.
Thank you for your comments. And regarding customer service, we recognize the importance of making their experience with the city better than what they currently have, whether it's online forms, the way they pay, so on and so forth, and even dealing with our vendors, and having portals and things like that, the way we pay our vendors. So those are all the types of conversations that we are having as our workgroups and teams. And then in addition to making sure that the voice is there from all of the players. So just not the finance, the, the financial system piece is the, the hub and the center. But, you know, the fleet, the mechanics, that crew, and their needs. All the enterprise asset management conversation is twenty, thirty people involved in that conversation. And so making sure that their voices are being heard as well. We did a lot of these presentations via Teams and the engagement. We could feel that it wasn't fully there, so we're going to circle back one more time with Barry and the teams. Barry's going to still be on Teams via Pittsburgh, but then we're going to be in-person with our workgroups and talking through and making sure that everything that we've talked about in those past thirty meetings or so, we've actually captured it. So this is what we're currently doing, this is what we want it to be, this is what we envision a new software can provide for us. And Barry is capturing all of that, him and his team, and then finalizing the RFP and going out to market.
I appreciate the, the comments, and I know the team's been working hard. I just want you to know that the executive team is fully supportive of this effort and look forward to deli- delivering a product that will work for many years to come and, and be integrated. You know, the utility one is a good example of where, you know, we're just, we're just not all, you know, we don't do electricity. We're not a single provider. We've got a, a water enterprise system, we've got a sanitary sewer enterprise system, and we got a stormwater enterprise system. So we, we definitely want a system that integrates. Most of those are certainly relying on that main factor of water, from the metering aspect of that. Others are just added to that system as additional fees for services. So, you know, we don't want just a utility service. We want something that we can use as management for long-term debt service, for three years of rain and no water use, to droughts, and, and how you manage that system. Those are going to be, that asset management and those future CIP projects that are tied to those future rates are going to be, be critical for us. So those are all components that still gives us a lot of administrative and management depth, but also provide that customer service realm.
I, I remember not too long ago, we had a glitch with the water bill and how people, what people were being charged if they used different fee, payment features. And I, I just want to be, you know, really careful when, when you implement this, that we don't throw the public a curve and we test it. That's the big deal. And I know the testing is, you know, people just throw it out and, and let people be frustrated, and then they fix what's, what doesn't work. And I hope that we would, I, I want our public to be, have as the best experience and, and have confidence in us. Mark, did you have?
Nope.
Okay. I wondered, Barry, are there quite a few companies that would bid on, on a project like this? Or are there just like three or five big ones?
You're, you will get a lot of, we've been getting a lot, a lot of proposers for all of our clients lately. It's, it's a pretty good market as far as the implementation services are concerned. Now, there, you know, in, in the baseline kind of enterprise, public sector enterprise market, there, there's probably about five, maybe in between five and seven software products, or, or software-as-a-service providers. But you're going to get implementers, as I said earlier, from different, you know, different areas for specific software. So for example, you could conceivably get a, get So, for example, you could conceivably get a, get one software proposer that pro, that is proposed by five different implementation.
Companies.
So, you know, the marketplace is there currently, you know, and, and it's kind of a buyer's market, which is why I said a little bit about being able to refine those costs on, because we've been getting a lot of proposals for our clients, and, and a lot of them similar to size of City of Manhattan.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
Go ahead.
Oh.
I can do it later.
What is the, I didn't see in our materials, what is the system we're using now for utility billing? Are we using AS 400?
Yeah, it's a Central Square product, it's, it's just their utility billing customer information systems module.
One of the features of, okay.
And it's integrated currently.
Yeah. How, if you had to guess, Barry, how many staff would we need to commit to implementing a, a system? Five? Four?
Yeah, you're going to get, well, you're going to need leads for kind of the main areas.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, financials, you know, procurement, financials, procurement, you're probably going to need some level of a lead to work with all of those different integrated components, the pay lossy, for example, budget to pay lossy, and then, you know, you still have some technical involvement. You'll get, you'll get different types of proposals, so you'll get some where you may need to commit people full-time to it, you may get some that just commit people for a percentage of an FTE, and, and you will get those as a matter of fact.
Sure.
That's part of the evaluation, is to guide.
Okay.
Just exactly what the city can provide and what, what's best for the city as far as, you know, a resource plan is concerned. But, you know, generally, if you just looked at it from a perspective of leads, you're going to have to have at least, you know, a, a fully committed project manager, and then some level of commitment from about four or five leads.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, thank you. I, I think that an inter, I just, generally, an enterprise system is sorely needed. Where I worked before, we abandoned an AS 400 probably fifteen years ago, and, and I was surprised we had it, but, and I'm, you know, surprised we still have it. We all are, it just has evolved.
There's still a lot of people out in the marketplace committed to them, you know, they were war horses.
Yeah.
For years.
That's right, and they still are, but...
Yeah, oh, for sure.
Time marches on, yeah. I, I, these auxiliary systems and tracking budgets outside of the, are, are just so complicated and manual, we call that now, I suppose, with maintaining those different systems and depending on them. But I, I think that this organization has the kind of experience, and you're not a for-profit, and that makes you mission-driven and much more affordable for a small city in, on the big scale like we are, and I know that, that this is a service for you. Identifying what we need is the key part that the implement, this plan that you're going to develop is all about, and, let's see, and that integration among the, within the system is important, and it's important that we assure security. How big an issue is that in your industry?
Um, you know, for a long time, the, the public sector was a little bit late to the game on software as a service, and a lot of that had to do with security. You know, governments, the, you know, public sector entities were a little bit wary of going out into the cloud, but actually, you know, what, what has been found, you know, in that type of technology stack is that the security is much more tighter than, you know, maintaining things on-prem. So, I, you know, there's very little risk, there, there's certainly some things that have to be taken care of, especially concerning how, as we said, those communication channels to the main product, and whether it's multi-tenant or single-tenant, all those things will kind of work out in, in the RFP and the proposal process, but, yeah, they're very secure and, and continuously are being worked on as far as security is concerned.
We've heard horror tales of hospitals and communities being held hostage by hackers, and now we have new tech, a new tech, what, computer invasions and trickery, so if we started today, it sounds like it would be almost three and a half years before we could have the, fully implemented, because it's going to take us a while to do the RFP, so it's one year for each of the three phases. I think option three sounds what I would prefer to do, and I appreciate this thorough discussion this evening. I think you've done a lot of research, Rena, and appreciate Barry being available to us to answer questions. It's...
Yeah, if I could just add, too, that may not be that long, because a lot of, a lot of implementation vendors today are running some of those phases that we have marked out, kind of parallel, and that gets you, number one, that gets you some economies of scale on the overall budget manager, but we'll guide you through that because there's some risk in that, too.
Yeah, okay, that'd be nice. Sooner the better.
Okay.
The only thing, I guess, one of the advantages of being a little late in the process is that we'll be able to require those that propose to provide us a list of places they've implemented, and so how, how customer-friendly has it been in various cities or counties where they've implemented this, and where we have to be disciplined is not to try and get the, the newest and best thing that hasn't been tested necessarily. So, that's a, that's a balance there that we'll have to, to try and work for, because there's, the technology is changing so rapidly, you know, what, what you're doing with GIS, the video comment was a, a, a big one, just because, you know, the, the amount of storage space it takes for, for video, whether it's UAS and just different techniques and different aspects of being able to manage that data and, and distribute it, and how useful is it? So, those are all just some of those issues that we'll continue to work through with our teams to try and really provide something that's very useful for us now and in the future.
No more questions? Okay. Rena, thank you. Do you have some comments? We haven't given you much of a chance to really talk about this whole process.
Um, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Hattasaw for sitting on the municipal audit committee, them and their efforts in supporting us with making this recommendation to move in this direction. Ron and Jason and Jared and Kristen for their support as well, probably about two, maybe three years ago, is when we really decided that we really need to start focusing on this and moving in this direction. We had already left and moved to new court management system, and then pay lossy as well, and then we're just gradually just moving things away from the current system. Our Civic Rec piece, the Click to Gov online payment tool for utility billing was another piece of it, so eventually, everything will go away and it'll just be the financial piece. So, I'm very excited that we do have Daniela here to help us coordinate and get everybody in a room together to talk through. Commissioner Motta, thank you for your comment about standing on the table and saying, you know, this is what we're doing. We're going to have to do some of that as we go along with the process, whatever we do decide to do, whether it is integrated or we do a combination of, of a hybrid with integrated and best of breed, this is our foundation, this is what we're starting with, and as Commissioner Butler said, if we have plugins, we need to make sure that it is fully integrated. Right now, we do do a lot of manual work to get the financial information back into the system for those pieces of software that are not integrated and its redundancy, duplication of efforts. I would like to say that I envision this software providing staff that do not currently use the software opportunity to utilize it as well. So, decision-making, data analysis, the reporting functionality greater, and then as well as the customer service experience, both internally with our vendors and then outside with our other customers.
I'd just add that I'm looking forward to get, not having to read the dot matrix printout. It's really small.
Oh.
And each month, and, and I think that it will be so much easier for the administration and the staff to provide reports to us as commissioners. We're hungry for information, and I know that it's difficult for you and time, so time-consuming to take you away from everything, but it is important, and this is something we needed to talk about, so thank you very much.
I envision the departments being able to run their own custom reports and things like that as well, instead of just heavily relying on the canned reports that the system generates, or relying on finance to provide that information to them as well, so it's exciting times.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we look forward to an update and...
Yep, before we go off for the RFP, we'll make sure...
Aerialtically through this process, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Good night, and we're adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.